Please join me in the Lord's Prayer and the Pledge of Allegiance.
Our Father, who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. That a kingdom come, that will be done, on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread, and forgive us our trespasses, as we forgive those who trespass against us. And lead us not in temptation, but deliver us from evil. For thine is the kingdom, the power, and glory forever, amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, Candy, roll call please.
Mr. Dully?
Yes.
Mr. Humphrey?
Yes.
Mr. Mads?
Yes.
Mr. Singleton?
Yes.
Mr. Yerda?
Yes. Uh, do I have a motion to accept agenda and addendum, please?
Motion. Scotty?
Roll call.
Mr. Singleton?
Yes.
Mr. Mads?
Yes.
Mr. Dully?
Yes.
Mr. Humphrey?
Yes.
Mr. Yerda?
Yes. All right, we're into public participation here. Uh, I guess first up will be, uh, Gail and Jude.
Okay, I want to kick off this meeting with a positive, as, as we have very positive meetings, and I appreciate. I want to share with you that, uh, that we've had a staff member nominated for a Guernsey County Support Professional Award. Mrs. B Bates received the Golden Apple Award from the Guernsey County Board of Developmental Disabilities on September twenty-eighth during their annual award ceremony. These awards celebrate our Guernsey County Direct Support Professionals. The Golden Apple Award celebrates and recognizes individuals who have made a significant difference in students' and local families' lives with their work in the educational school setting. The nominations are open for anyone who would like to recognize our area of direct support professionals, and there were many this year. Very competitive field. We are very proud of Bee and recognize the years that she has served Rolling Hill School District, impacting many students, staff, me being one of them, and families' lives with her caring nature, knowledge, and dedication to our area youth and community members. Bee currently serves the district at Mrs. Thomas's building, Visville Elementary, as a paraprofessional. Mrs. Thomas?
Okay, first, I did not make it to the awards ceremony, which I really hated, but I was out sick at the time, and I want to thank Jude Black and Devon Detra for standing in for me. It's nice to know when you're sick and kind of flat on your back, somebody's going to step up and take over. So that was great to have them there. So I've written up a little bit about Bee to give you some background on her. Some of you probably already have some. Brenda Bates, AKA Bee Bates, is currently in her twenty-seventh year of work in Rolling Hill's local school district. Bee is a Rolling Hills graduate, as are her two children. She actually lived, has lived in the school district for the past fifty-nine years. Bee spent her first two years in the district at Metta Brook High School. The last twenty-five have been at Visville Elementary, for which I am very grateful. People like Bee bring a new meaning to the word, the title, paraprofessional. Mrs. Bates, as a student scholar, completes many tasks and touches multiple lives in the course of each day at school. She begins her day by greeting students and parents in the drop-off area behind the school. Not only does she welcome everyone with a cheer or a hello, or how are you, she also opens every car door and lets children out and walks them to the building safely. That may not sound like a big deal until you think about the many grandparents in this day and age that are raising grandchildren. We make sure, Bee makes sure, every morning that those children get in the building safely. She opens the back door, she unbuckles their belts and gets them out of their car seats or chairs or whatever they're riding in, and makes sure the grandparents don't have to get out of the car. And, um, you know, when we first started that system, people was like, oh no, I want to walk my kids in. Now they're mad at you if you don't come and get them, especially if it's raining, snowing, or sleeping. They're just so grateful. Uh, when it's pouring down rain and they don't have to get out of the car, Mrs. Bates is there. When it's snowing and the parking lot is icy, Mrs. Bates is there. Younger parents might have a child crying, Mrs. Bates again is right there. Now keep in mind, that is the only first twenty minutes to half hour of her day. Then she goes on for several more hours, touching many more people throughout the building and, and stu- including students, parents, staff, teachers, para- other parapros. Um, she's been instrumental in checking on our beha- our new behavior room at Visville. So she's kind of just, I said, you know, I said, you don't have to, she says, I'm not comfortable being bossy, which I find very hard to believe. But Bee is very kind, and I said, when you're talking to these new parapros, you know, just, you know, gently say, hey, you might try this, you know? Or I said, just go in and mild if you see something going on, just went in. She's doing that, and things are going great there. But, um, I've had the great opportunity to take her place some mornings when she's not there. And, um, the only thing I hear is, where's Mrs. Bates? Is she okay? Is she coming back, you know? And I'm thinking, hey, what about me? But in all reality, they miss her when she's not there. And kids are coming in the building sometimes crying because Mrs. Bates wasn't here to get them out of the car. Um, Bee is an excellent example of what we expect and appreciate from our parapros. A good parapro is worth their weight in gold. They spend their entire day supporting others, filling gaps, and making it much more possible for teachers to teach. The paraprofessional position is not an easy one to fill. We look for compassionate, kind, caring people with a lot of energy and patience. The paraprofessional, um, sorry, can't see. Twenty-seven years ago, oh, okay, let me do this again. Sorry, we had lost its power. Um, the paraprofessional position is not an easy one to fill. We look for compassionate, kind, and caring people. Twenty-seven years ago, we were very fortunate to find just that person, and Mrs. Bates. And Mrs. Bates, thank you from the bottom of my, of my heart for your exceptional work with Bobby Mads.
Yes, thank you. As a token of appreciation from the Rolling Hills Board of Education, we would like to present to you these products.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anything you'd like to say?
I was, I was honored, I was touched. Working with Bobby was one of mine, he's, he's dear to my heart and he always will be. I love my job, that's all I can say. I love, there was a few times it was like, he was my psychologist.
Every time.
For a few years, but I do, I love my job and I, I just, it's an honor to work with all of them. Mrs. Thomas, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, and we're glad to have you, thank you. I didn't include earlier, but, uh, and when I gave him the list, I didn't ask principals to come or anything, but, uh, Ashley Bates Coates was with us today, who we recently hired as, kind of split between, uh, school psychologist and speech. And we never really got a chance to introduce her, so if you would, uh, yeah, there's other things on there that'll evolve, but, while we had a moment, I definitely wanted to recognize her, and if you want to say anything, feel free.
No, thank you, I'm just happy to be back. I started here as your speech therapist. Been seven years, I took a seven-year hiatus, and then went to Buckeye Trail and did speech therapy, and now I'm back in a new role, and I'm very happy to be back.
She filled a huge gap for us, and was doing a wonderful job. Well, I was whispering to Devon earlier, I'm like, who's the lady beside you? I met you one other time, but it was just in passing, you know? But thank you, and it's awesome to have you. We appreciate it. All right, well, congratulations. That's an awesome honor. Okay, we're going to move on then, we're going to go to Athletic Administrator, Mr. Jeff Wheeler.
Fantastic, I get to follow that. Jumbo, you want to go and circle back? I'm going to head on to some high school stuff. First and foremost, uh, glad to be here, I haven't been back in my calendar, and it just happens to fall. It seems like Thursday night board meetings are always, uh, we have home athletic events. This is the first, first night that I've been able to come since July, so I'm happy to be here. Uh, I'm going to start out with some high school things. We started this last year, and I, I think it's fantastic. We try to do a social, emotional, uh, team culture, uh, building activity once a month with all of our students. Yesterday, we had our one for this month, and it was a pumpkin decorating contest. Last month, we did a sidewalk chalk. We turned it into a competition, and it sounds crazy to give high school kids, uh, chalk, right? But they all have their square, and they, they work together as an advisory group, and then we go out and we, we rank them, and based off the rankings, they get, they get rewards and stuff, and they really get into it. So I would highly encourage you to, uh, if you want to see pictures from our pumpkin decorating contest yesterday, uh, go to our high school Twitter page, that's at MHS Colts, um, because there was a lot of pictures taken of those pumpkins, and they did a fantastic job. Speaking of technology and getting, you know, trying to get the high school out there, um, we have, uh, updated our Twitter page and our high school website. Um, so if you guys get a minute, I encourage you to go on there because it is up to date. Unfortunately, between a lot of changes, this, that, and the other, it just wasn't getting up to date. We had pictures on our high school website that were, uh, pretty old of, of kids that have graduated and went, but it is all up to date, so that's great. Next thing, this week is Red Ribbon Week, so, uh, we've had themes every day. Uh, you know, uh, the kids are really buying into this, staff's buying into this to try to, uh, encourage, uh, you know, um, say no to drugs, stay away from drugs, this, that, and the other. So, uh, again, more pictures are posted on Twitter for that. Next week, Scott and I will have our first Student Advisory Committee. This consists of two kids of every grade level, I think you did this at Claymont? Uh, no, we did it here at, uh, Metta Brook, yes, yep. Um, but, uh, we got a great group, and we, we had our initial meeting, and I'm hoping, and I think our goal is for them to bring back a lot of things to us. Um, because sometimes what we see, we think everything's going good, you miss that snapshot from kids on what they're going through, uh, maybe some minor changes that we can do to make their experience better, so hopefully that's beneficial. Two weeks ago, our counselors did College Apps Application Week with most of our seniors. Again, that's on our Twitter page. Uh, here in a couple of weeks, we'll be taking the sophomores and middies, uh, for them to tour the buildings, uh, and get information on all the programs that are offered. Those dates are November ninth and seventeenth. The office staff has been working extremely hard on getting, uh, ready for our High School Colt Christmas. Last year, we went back and looked, we, we were able to provide Christmas to twenty-seven students from our high school and their siblings. That's an amazing number. So our goal this year, uh, obviously twenty-seven's a high number, our goal initially is a twenty, um, but that's all going to be based off of funds that we can raise, and that's a hundred percent donation. Our kids going out, getting those funds, it's zero cost to the district, um, because we got, get all these donations, and all that donations goes back toward buying Christmas gifts. I wanted to say this because I've been, I've been the assistant principal for five years, so I went back and I looked at data from the last five years. Uh, because this year, for some reason, and, and there's a lot of reasons for this, but we just finished the first nine weeks. I went back, happy to say that the number of suspensions this year so far, and again, it's just a nine-week snapshot, are the lowest they've been in five years. Uh, the number of student tardiness is at its lowest, and it ain't even close. Like, on a given day, there's been, there's been several days, we don't even have a kid who is tardy, which is amazing at the high school level. And then the other one is our attendance is at the all-time high in the last five years for just the first nine weeks. Mr. Golick and myself, and I want to thank him, but over the summer, we, we put in some new policies and procedures, and we just laid it out for the kids on day one, and they, they bought in. Uh, but there's consequences if they come in late, uh, there's consequences if they're not there. So, uh, you got anything to speak on that? Because it's been fantastic. Yeah, it has been. Um, and the last thing, and this is not my perception, and I invite you guys to come and do the high school whenever, uh, it's fantastic, but this is coming from a lot of our high school staff that the culture right now is just at an all-time high. And staff, uh, seem like we're just, uh, things are going great right now at the high school. So I, I would highly encourage to come in, but staff, uh, this culture's great right now, I think there's a lot of reasons for that. We've had some turnover, we got rid of, and I don't want to say rid of, there's some teachers that retired, went in different directions, and the new people we brought in have been fantastic, and it's fit into our culture great, so it's been good. Upcoming events, Merckley calendars, because we've got some big ones coming up. The band will travel to Hilliard Bradley, uh, this Saturday for the state marching band finals. They will go on and perform at ten-thirty. Our volleyball team will travel to Mayville on Saturday to compete in the OHSA Division III District Championship, and that is eleven AM. Kendall West, uh, last week finished ninth, uh, at the Division II districts, so he will be going and representing Metta Brook at this weekend's regionals. That takes pa- place at Pickerton North at twelve-thirty on Saturday. And then our entire girls team, it's fantastic, we got zero seniors. Uh, so I'm pretty excited right now with cross-country and our girls, with no seniors. Uh, but the entire girls team qualified for regionals, so they'll get to go up as a team and compete. They'll be running at one-fifteen on Saturday. I do want to give a special, uh, and we don't even know who it is, so, but we have an anonymous donor. Uh, and he's, and, and they've done it for multiple years, but contacted me before, I think it was last Monday, and said, hey, volleyball has a chance to, to make a long run here, and it could be historical, special, blah, blah, blah. And I said, absolutely, he said, I want to pay for every student's ticket, grade nine through twelve. Uh, so, with that, um, we have a donor who is paying for every student ticket, nine through twelve, to all of our volleyball tournament games. The only cost we have is, as an athletic department, I, I'm going to provide a pep bus, because not all of our kids, nine through twelve, can, can self-transport. So that's just fantastic. Uh, I think our Thursday home game, it was a hundred fourteen student tickets I bought. Last night, uh, sixty-sixty-six, obviously we played on the road, there were some other events going on. Um, so that's fantastic, and then as far as athletics, it's crazy, but, uh, there falls winding down. All we got left is cross-country and volleyball. Winter sports is here, uh, girls' basketball started last Friday officially, boys' basketball starts tomorrow, and wrestling starts November eleventh. So, uh, not a large gap between seasons, but that's a good thing. So hopefully, uh, some of our girls' basketball games will have to maybe get moved and pushed because volleyball team, uh, expectations are high, and if they play to their capability, uh, it could be a fun, exciting couple of weeks here, so, that's all I have. You got anything? Nope, 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 nope.
Please thank that alone as well.
Yeah.
Oh, shots me, uh, they, they, yes, absolutely.
That's really something, that's good. All right, uh, next up, Mr. Jason May, Transportation and Grounds. And before you get started, I'd like to, I'd like to tell you, I seen a, either it was a text or email you sent from one of the drivers, that you guys, that is praising you and what you've done at the bus garage with, with just the whole, uh, culture.
Culture, and, yeah, they're, they're content, they said, you know, there was some rough times, and we knew there was going to be, you know, initially.
And I called a couple of times, and you took care of everything, so I want to thank you, I think you're doing a tremendous job, uh, from the Board of Education, uh, with what Devon sent out, uh, as far as the employees, they're, they're happy, so thank you.
Same here, uh, Mr. Adak, anytime I'm called from high school, Jason's on it, and it's, it's been.
Yeah, I had a few parents calling, you know, it's my job, and I called, and you, you, you just did great, so thank you very much. And I knew you were under an extreme amount of pressure there early on, but it's been great, so thank you.
A complete career change.
Yeah, exactly. I jumped out of the frying pan into the fire, but you can go through it, so, thank you.
His kids still take after his wife, but he is doing a great job.
Well, um, it's my first meeting here in, in my capacity at the bus garage. Basically, I, I wrote a little thing here, like, thank Mr. Detra for his patience and professionalism in dealing with me, uh, in this new position, uh, sometimes a lot of growing means, but we got through it. Also, like, I'll thank all the principals, they've been huge help, especially the secretaries. Secretaries, I'm, I'm on the phone with them daily, so they've been huge, huge, uh, assets to me. Mandy, payroll, uh, Candy with the treasure, dealing with everything. Shelley with the requisitions, it's a to- I mean, it's total new, uh, shock for me, uh, dealing with it. I just thought I'd be dealing with buses. A little bit, new grounds I have to do.
Then we make to do paperwork.
Yeah, paperwork, requisitions, you know, purchase orders, things like that, and I'm starting to get the hang of things, uh, it's come, come along, it's come along nicely. Yeah, it, the first couple of weeks, it was, it wa- it was difficult, but we got through that. People say it was baptized by fire. We had to, incident at Secrest with the back, backflow of the sewage, and we had to shut down the schools that day. COVID shortened, uh, had, being short on bus drivers, we got that kind of ironed out. Thank the board and the superintendent for, we were creative, we got that sign-on bonus that was a huge, huge help for us in the, I call it poaching, some other drivers. When I just recently went through the bus supply server, uh, Zanesville for PNCIO, and they were talking about other districts are starting to do the same thing with the, with the sign-on bonuses, trying to be creative to attract new drivers to their districts, because it, you know, I think it's our society, not only bus drivers, but any position. I mean, it's just tough to find individuals that want to come to work, uh, I don't know how they pay bills, but they don't, but. Uh, we did implement new routes, I'm sure every, uh, board member has heard about it on the phone when we first started doing it. You know, when you make change, change sometimes doesn't go well, especially with thirty-year staff members, you know? So Chuck, he's getting ready to retire in December, you know, he was kind of, I don't know, buddy, I don't know. He was in my corner, but he just wasn't quite sure how it was going to turn out. But, you know, once we got through it, it, it worked out well. This new, uh, route finder, train finder we use now to do with the routes, and it, it's pretty good. It's all, it's a computer program that we utilize, um, and I got a copy up here. You guys can just take a quick look, but this is just a one general route. And you don't have to, I mean, I don't care if you look at it, pass it down, but basically, that, that's a route from one of our buses in the morning. It shows the mileage, uh, time of pickup, things like that. So when somebody calls in, like a, what time's my child going to be picked up? I can basically type their last name in and go rather, uh, we've updated a lot of things that are in the garage when it comes to routing and software for the students and the bus. And I think it helps out with, uh, being proficient with, you know, the secretaries and the principals, uh, in respective buildings. But I think it's a great program. We're going to downsize a little bit on it this year, there's a couple of things we don't, we don't need, just to save the district a little bit of money. But anyway, that was, that was a huge undertaking. In fact, we, we basically eliminated a bus route from that, and then we were able to utilize, we didn't eliminate a position, we were able to use that position as a floating bus driver. And then we had to rebid everything for a contract, so that took a little bit. Right now, we sit at two floating bus drivers, and when I say floating, they just, you know, there's always people off. Right now, we've got one off for surgery, one for medical for, uh, for asthma. So every day, we have two bus drivers off automatic, and then, so there's our two floaters. So now we're dealing with the subs, we're getting, uh, bus drivers certified here in the next two months. Finding their classes was a little difficult, PNCIO was backed up, now everybody's back on the same page, so we're making, making progress with that. With this new routes, uh, people ask, hey, how many miles, how many miles do you guys drive a day? You know, and I'm like, I got that all broken down, but I just wanted to, we average almost fifty-seven hundred miles per week with all the buses traveling in our district. We have fifteen buses, that's average about four hundred miles per week per bus. And, uh, they take, they take a beating on some of our township roads. You guys, you guys live on some of these township roads, so, you know, Flash, he's been insightful, uh, up there at the garage, he's been, he, he's been, been a help. Uh, he, he's a good mechanic, and anything that goes, you know, he's in there, he's, he's taking care of it, turning wrenches, getting it done. But like I said, the bus routing was the biggest thing. Once we put, once we went online and put those, uh, routes on there and the times, man, the phone didn't stop. It was like terrible, and I'm like, what am I doing here? You know, I know his phone was going crazy. Uh, because basically what we tried to do at the beginning was cut Secrest out. Secrest is, it's a unique entity down there, I never realized, my kids went to school there, but to route, to, to do bus routing down there, because you basically got six or seven buses are designated for that, and our departure time was a little off. So Secrest, you know, uh, worked with their departure time, was better able to fit with us and the bus routing. So we, we changed a lot of the routes and got them back to where people were more content. You know, I'm not going to make everybody happy, but for the majority, I think it's pretty good. We don't pick up no student earlier than, I believe, six-thirty in the morning, some people are like, that's pretty early, but we have some Sparrow Road out on the backside of Lake, I mean, there's no easy way to get there. We have some Raven Road, you know, anytime you get around the lake on the backside, it, it's tough. And then township roads, there's no easy way to get back through there. So that was one of the good things about taking a position, I did know the roads. So when people would call me, you know, I haven't been stumped on any roads yet, but I, I don't know them all, but majority of them I do. One of the things we kind of discussed, uh, beginning was the conditions of the bus. We had a lot of buses back there, you look at them, you think, we're, we're pretty good, but a lot of those buses are old. You know, yellow's yellow, the bus hasn't changed too much in time. But if you, I've learned this, if you don't have a white top on the bus, it's, it's pretty old. You know, so if you ever look at a bus, you look at the white top, you know? It's one of those things like, yeah, it's decent bus, but if it's all yellow, hand things up there. We have, uh, four buses, one's got over two-hundred-four thousand, one's got over a hundred ninety-four thousand, a hundred ninety-five thousand, a hundred eighty thousand on four of our buses. Uh, mechanics feel they're good, they pass inspection, but, but you get that many miles on them, you, you know, imagine what the undercarriage is like as far as the roads are taking a beating. You put a two-hundred-thousand-mile road on Cherry Hill and Plywood Road and things, that's not like an interstate road by any means. If anybody's been out there, they take a beating. But, you know, we had two bus accidents since I've been, uh, the director, one was our fault, one wasn't. She didn't get cited, just ran off the road. Four-year-old preschool student decided she was going to get up and go down the steps while the bus was in motion. So I, I can't fault the bus driver, she had to do what she had to do, ran off the road and hit a sign, nobody's hurt. But I'd like, you know, again, I like thank Mrs. Black, she's, she's been a help, we deal with special needs bus. I didn't realize that when I came into this position, she's awesome. When it comes to discipline, Mr. Golick and, uh, they're pretty good, right?
Yeah, oh yeah, we take care of them.
But for the most part, it's been pretty decent, like, I do issues.
Doing a great job.
Yeah, uh, main goal for the remainder, you know, one of the things I want to look at, and I, I talked to Mr. Detra, is, uh, cameras on the bus. I mean, we're behind time when it comes to that. I just look at other school districts around, and, uh, we're, we're way behind there. Some, these are just a few things that, I don't want to bring bad, you know, bad negativity on our district. We got a lot of good, great, great kids ride those buses, but we also have a few bad apples, you know what I mean? So if you get a few of those, the fighting on the bus, the bullying, vandalism, you know, we got, we got bus seats that get, they cut, cut quite a bit. Those are about two hundred bucks to put a seat cover on, you know, they add up over time. Vaping, that's probably, to me, I mean.
That's the biggest issue in the state.
Yeah, Mr. Wheeler, then, I mean, they could probably go into more detail on that, but again, that's, that's huge on the bus. And we're having, I'm getting calls and complaints from parents, and, you know, they, they got a third grader that's riding with a high school student or whatnot, and you got kids vaping, and it's tough for the bus driver to be watching the road and looking in the mirror and seeing, you just can't see it. I mean, these are things that I've dealt with this year, you know, drugs being found on the bus, eating and drinking, people like eating and drinking ain't bad, you know, let them drink the water, but they're throwing the water bottles and hitting kids with it, so it becomes a safety issue. Uh, the standing up, I was, my coach rode the bus many times, I was like, that's a big deal. If they have to hit the brakes real fast, we know where the student's going, he's not sitting down, he's, he's flying through, through the, so it's, it's all about safety. Sex acts, like I said, they've all been reported this year to me, and we're trying to address that. So these cameras are huge, I mean, uh, we're looking at a four-camera system, um, is thirty-one thousand to equip all our buses with four cameras in there, and those are state-of-the-art cameras. There's not a blind spot in the bus, you can't hide behind the seat. So I think if we get that, Mr. Wheeler, and, uh, their jobs are going to be a lot easier, because they're, it's, my job's kind of easy. I, I got to take the report, and I give it to the principals, and the assistant principals, they investigate it, you know, they're the interrogation crew, and they take care of it, and they've done a good, good job.
I think we found out the grants, though.
There's grants I'm looking at through Bureau of Work and Comp. And, uh, Bureau of Work and Comp right now is the only grant I've seen out there, we're looking in the process of applying for that. But we get that, one of the things that we're just, Mrs. Black, she's always bringing great information. We got a new school, uh, the Academy? The Academy in Cedar Ridge? All right, so that, everybody, that's great, and it's great, but now we have to provide transportation up there and provide transportation back for the students. So there's always ob- there's obstacles every day, but once I think I've got it figured out, there's something new. And I think that's worth the job, I enjoy that, I guess.
Doesn't get boring.
Don't get boring, you know what I mean, but I, I want to really, I've been out of the, the high school, Mr. Wheeler, Mr. Golick's been huge. Don't get boring, you know what I mean? But I, I want to really, I've been out of the, the high school. Mr. Wheeler, Mr. Golick's been huge, uh, in helping me out down there. Cause that's a lot of our problems with students have been at the high school. But every school's been great. They're all professional, uh, a great team, great team to work with. And, uh, we'll deal with the academy. So if, if you think about Raven Road, Raven Road, you know, and.
Yeah, do them all too. We got every, the, the, the one you mentioned, Sparrow is the worst I know of.
You know, they, they threw Sparrow, they threw me, you know, let's think, like I said, you think you got to figure out a throw curve ball. You got, you got this route down and all of a sudden New Garden Road becomes, uh, closed for three months.
Yeah, Sparrow's like that. It's literally, yeah.
And now anybody you would know better than anybody, now we got Robbins Road closed.
Yeah.
So where does our, all our routing from Seacrest goes through Robbins, three of our buses, half of our buses go through Robbins. So now we're, we're tackling, solving, running. So it's always, but it's fun. Uh, my, you know, you call me, reach out to me, some, some of the board members have, uh, I'm enjoying it.
Normally we, he's, like I said, he's doing a wonderful job. Normally we bring new hires in right off the bat, but he was getting his feet wet right off the bat and I didn't want to add any more.
I said, what do about November and you can have no meaning.
The few times I called, I hated to even call, but like I said, you handled it so well and so professional.
I appreciate that.
And yeah, I mean, it, it meant so much to me and then parents, you know, nobody wants to be a pain. It's just, you know, they, they got kids. And they, they want their, they, they love their kids.
I said, I think I was looking out there, the phone just non-stop and you, like I said, and I remember the first day of school, I'd walk out there and I sat to get some fresh air in my little office. And I look out and the two smartest employees of the district with Skinner and Hair up there mowing grass. I was like, I picked the wrong job. But no, but for all the staff, uh, you know, maybe I didn't mention, I, I want to thank you guys for real, because you're making it to where it's, uh, it's not a nuisance if I have to call over there and feel like I'm, I'm burdening something.
Thank you, Phil.
Yeah. If I can, I would like to recognize one other staff member and I know we've taken a while, so I'll keep it quick. I told the principals they didn't have to come, but I know Mrs. Hair would have mentioned this. Uh, I just happened to be at Seacrest Tuesday morning, I think, when a, uh, young boy slipped in gym class and, uh, broke his arm pretty bad. Um, he's fine. I called the parents the next day and, you know, he's, he's in good shape now, but really deserves a shout-out. Beech Stevens, the, the gym teacher there in Biesville, sat on the floor and held this eight-year-old boy for forty-five minutes, waiting for the ambulance to come out. And, you know, and I told him, I said, I knew you do those things you don't think about, but that kid will never forget that. You know, cause I mean, one of his parents, of course, you know, that's not possible. Um, you know, being at Seacrest, the ambulance has taken a while, you know, he's upset and Beech sat there in that same spot and held him for forty-five minutes. A huge shout-out. Those are the kind of things like be, go unnoticed on a daily basis.
Yeah.
That's like a heroic thing.
Yeah, unbelievable.
Absolutely.
All right. I really appreciate it. Uh, we are down two. Is there any public participants? I don't see anybody tonight. Nobody signed anything? All right, uh, Treasurers' Report. I'll turn it over to Candy.
Okay, I have approval of the minutes from September twenty-second, the regular meeting through the financial report for September. Approved the Metta Life Insurance Renewal as presented. Approved changing advance from general fund to band support fund to transfer. This is back in twenty-twelve. It was sitting on our books and audit wanted a, a change to the, um, transfer. This is before I was even treasurer. So they said, just board approving this, we'll fix it or they can fix it on their end. So recommended transferring the following funds from the general fund to the athletic support fund, point two thousand, seven hundred and two dollars and sixty-seven cents. Band support fund, um, two thousand, six hundred and fifty-six dollars and fourteen cents. Approved the now certificate for valid purchase orders greater than three thousand. There's an entire list. Um, a lot of this is the timing in the year. Some of it's just, um, we have some new employees and new positions that's getting the hang of, need a requisition and PO before we make the purchase. We're getting better with that. Um, approved the resolution, self-certifying fifty thousand dollar micro purchase threshold for use of federal funds as presented. And accept the personal day payout and resignation candy rate as presented.
All right. Do I have a motion for those items?
Hold it.
I'll second. I did, John. Roll call, please.
Hey, Mr. Humphrey?
Yes.
Mr. Adak?
Yes.
Mr. Dudley?
Yes.
Mr. Moats?
Yes.
Mr. Singleton?
Yes.
All right, we are two, uh, standing committees. Uh, first up's policy. We have Matt and Mike on that. Is there anything?
Nothing.
Yeah, okay. Athletic, Brad? I don't have anything. Do you have anything?
Nope, didn't go to, um, I was across country there. That was good. There were a few that he did and, uh, Mr. Wheeler covered the rest of it, going all and, and it's cross-country.
That one, Mr. Wheeler, I'm sorry, it's hard to.
Yeah. Okay, legislative, uh, student achievement, Mike?
Yeah, no, they're still, they're, they're not coming back until after the elections.
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah, Congress is out for three months. Yeah, that's, that's what I like to do with my job. I'll just be back in three months.
Mid-East, Mike again.
Nothing to report. We're just, you know.
Nothing under personnel negotiations, Darren, Matt?
Nothing of the fun.
Uh, building grounds, that's Brad and Darren.
No, we had, uh, met with Skinner. Skinner does a great job. Had, had issue with some groundwork there and, uh, double check with Skinner tomorrow and that, see how that went.
I do have one thing out that I just thought of. I had a call from Ruby, is it Brummage?
Mm-hmm.
Remember Ruby that drove for the district forever? She called and I wanted to thank you. Uh, she was concerned with the lighting.
Yeah.
For the games, the volleyball games out at the high school outside, I guess it was really dark.
Yes.
And Ruby called me and I called Devon. He already had things lined up.
Me at the game.
Okay. Yeah, I figured Ruby reached out to a lot of people, but it was all legit and, and, uh, she called, I do want to tell you, she called me and thanked me. And all I did was call you and it was already in place and, but Ruby really appreciated getting the lighting out there for the, so whoever was involved in that, thank you. I, I figured Mr. Wheeler, Mr. Golick and you and, cause that was pretty serious, uh.
A lot of the other seniors as well.
Okay.
ICO or over here across the interstate helped us out and really worked a problem with us.
I just thought of that and I thought, I, I wanted to mention it because, uh, Ruby, she did call me back. I, I think she talked to Lisa and said, thank you guys.
And the lights, and, and the lights out there are so much better that they're, uh, well, L, yeah, LED lighting and it is, it really lights it up.
Yeah, we started from five and cut it down to three, you know? That's better, bright.
Looked like you had a football game. But I want to thank everybody on that because we, that was definite, uh, needed attention. Uh, I don't know of anything on audit or.
Um, gap auditors are in, so state auditors, it's full swing.
And I guess I just kind of touched on community outreach with, you know, Ruby and, does anybody have anything else, Mike?
Yeah, one of the other things, um, in the past, what we've done with, when KGP, um, Carol Graham comes in and does ballgames, um, we started to do an informational piece, working with him, having, uh, Mr. Golick, um, Mr. Detra, uh, just to address some of the things that have went on in the community. So that way, when, if you turn into one of Caleb's games, he has fifteen minutes, twenty minutes of dead air. Uh, just silence with, just with the cameras running. And, uh, so the thought was to get some PR stuff going in there, have people talking about what's went on. I contacted Mr. Detra. We're in the process of getting that started again for basketball season. So that way we can get the, the word out on the good things that have went on in this school district.
Yeah, thanks, Mike. I, I'd forgotten, but I'd say that was fantastic.
All right, and I do nine.
Nine and B.
Yes.
We're good on both of them.
Good on both of them, okay. Uh, noble business. We are two superintendents report. I'll turn it over to Mr. Detra.
All right, uh, I'd like to ask for approval of A, which is hiring as usual, through H. D is an MOU with the, uh, union to change Skinner, talking about how great of a job he does. His role, um, he was still being paid as a custodian after being head of grounds there for all those years. So we, we took care of him and, uh, the union worked with us on that. And G and H are just to, uh, get the DD phase started with the shack. Uh, both companies are moving on that and, uh, hoping here by spring, we can really be moving full bore on it. So once again, A through each.
I do have to ask about Jay Jackson, assistant coach.
I will leave that to the head basketball coach, head basketball coach.
I want to ask, ask two, the donation. So eight hundred and eight dollars, uh, is this the carryout right here on the, on the turn?
Yeah.
That Mr. Wood owes?
Yeah, we used to call the cutoffs, yeah.
Well, that's not, and then twenty-two hundred and fifty dollars from Mr. Glenro for Metta Brook FFA. That's awesome.
Absolutely.
All right. Do I have a motion for those items?
Motion.
Do I have a second, please?
I'll second.
Okay, roll call.
Mr. Singleton?
Yes.
Mr. Humphrey?
Yes.
Mr. Dove?
Yes.
Mr. Moats?
Yes.
Mr. Adak?
Yes.
Do we have any correspondence? Any information items? I guess we do have some stuff there. Mr. Detra?
Uh, I was going to touch on B and the golden apple, but I, they stole my thunder back there, so we can move past that. I did listen there, though. We need to talk about moving board meetings and adding a special for interviews and possible hiring, so.
Okay, uh.
The November meeting's on Thanksgiving.
So we want to move it, I see to the seventeenth, is that what?
That's my suggestion, but that's up to you guys.
Does that sound good?
Yeah.
Uh, and then since we're doing, I think Mike mentioned, should we go ahead and look at, uh, December and January? While we're on this and just take care of those while we're here, because I guess January, we got to have by the fifteenth. So.
The second week, pull on account.
Yeah, let's just do whatever we're doing, if you guys don't care.
Yeah.
We'll just, we'll just do them all and.
So November and December to the third Thursday, right?
Tell me a date for December, please.
Fifteenth.
Fifteenth, yeah.
Perfect. And then January, if you want to get in before the fifteenth, the twelfth is the second Thursday.
Sounds good.
And then probably your really only option there.
Then immediately following that, we'll go back to the third Thursday, the rest of the, the year, okay? But this happens every year this time with holidays and different things. We have to, and I don't like to change, we don't like to change meeting times, but, uh, we don't have a lot of, of, uh.
Well, and historically, it was always the third Thursday, twelfth.
Yeah, but it will be two meetings. I need to.
Oh, on the twelfth and twenty-sixth.
Yeah, but it will be, or it's still a regular meeting on January, so I can get that advertised.
So do you need two dates?
No.
No.
Oh, okay.
We just.
That's what you're saying, okay, okay.
It's two meetings, but same time.
Well, that was easy.
And the special meeting, what I, what I kind of thought and see what you guys thought, uh, the, the posting goes down tomorrow, correct?
It's a rolling posting, so as we get things, uh, you can start interviewing. I have some already that I'll give you guys an executive.
The posting.
Yours is the biggest.
The posting says November fourth.
Oh, it's supposed to be rolling.
It says November fourth.
Ooh, okay. I'll take care of it. It's supposed to be rolling, but we are on a bit of a time.
We are. We do need to look at our candidates and, uh, do some interviews, I think, as early as we can next week. So if it's good by you guys, Tuesday, Wednesday. Darren was, you pick one and you're, you got to drive the.
Tuesday or is it not?
Tuesday at five?
I can get here. I might be a few months late.
Brad, Tuesday at five?
I'm good.
Matt?
Yes, I'm good.
Let's shoot, let's do Tuesday at five, Matt. I don't have the date for.
It's November fourth, right?
Okay, yes.
That's what I'm saying, Joe, but.
A little bit later than I thought.
Oh, ask.
No, I can probably.
Well, if it's at five, you're okay, but you have been called this Tuesday. We're probably going to be nervous for the day.
Five will be okay.
Yeah.
Yeah. I don't want to, yeah, I don't want to do it too late because we have to interview and, you know, it'll take a little bit, so. Okay, thank you. So we've got the special meeting, uh, we are two.
Last part.
Yes.
Uh, just an informational item I wanted to point out because it's really a fantastic story. Um, sadly here, how long ago now?
June.
Uh, we lost probably one of the biggest and best fans in the history of this school district, Carol Humphrey. Um, she, her and Deb Charleston came to every game and, I mean, junior high games, knew the kids by name, back generations. Sat inside the doors, soon as you walked into the gym, left-hand side, second row, I mean, every game.
Referees, double.
Referees knew them, would come over, talk to them during the games. I, it's truly a unique thing. Um, and they really supported, Carol supported the kids. Yeah, above and beyond what anybody knew, you know, taking them out to, you know, buying kids things when they needed it. Just the true sense of what a community school and a, a community individual is in our, in our district. Upon her passing, her granddaughter, Jessica Humphrey, reached out and asked if we could honor her by putting a plaque and kind of retiring that seat she sat in for all those years. And, uh, I mean, just what a great idea. We got goosebumps talking about it. So we have that and we are going to put that in on her seat and all passes around so everybody can see it. Um, you know, huge loss, but what an amazing way to recognize her.
That is, that's very nice. Very, very positive things from many years from her, for our community that often you cannot find the words to express when you see things like this. Just beautiful. What you guys are doing, I like it.
Cool.
This nation's greatest fan. It's awesome.
Yeah, kids, kids knew him by na, knew her by name. It's just, it's really, some of them should be recognized.
Really good.
That's all I have.
All right, and, uh, we are going to go into executive session to consider matters, uh, required to be kept confidential.
Thank you.
By federal law or regulations or state statutes and consider the employment of a public employer official. Uh, there'll be no, uh, correspondence or actions afterwards. So do I have a motion to go into executive session?
Motion. Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Moats?
Yes.
Mr. Singleton?
Yes.
Mr. Dove?
Yes.
Mr. Humphrey?
Yes.
Mr. Adak?
Yes. What time do we have?
Seven seventeen.